Back at full strength here, all council members, good afternoon again. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, Councilman Higgins asked. Item I'd have added under, I guess it could be either under Engineering or under New Business. I want to talk about the alley and the drainage behind the Canadian BMW.
Okay.
So, if you want to add that to Engineering.
I would say Engineering would be the best place for it. Okay, you have a motion to accept the agenda as amended. I'll move approval.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Consent agenda. Do we have anything that should be removed from that, or do we have a motion to accept as is? So moved, second half. On favor?
Aye.
Moving right along. No presentations, so we can get into item seven, Engineering. Item A, the EDA Business Park Development update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. In your packet tonight is a copy of a letter that we had prepared in March 29th for the special EDA meeting that was held last Monday, April 1st. Did you know that the city and the EDA is working towards development of the parcel along County Road 12 as an industrial park? A lot of the preliminary work, the geographic survey and some of the investigations have been completed, the wetland delineation's been done, and the city is interested, and the EDA is interested in moving towards actually plating the property. And so, we were asked to put together a proposal for what that would require, from the engineering perspective, the work that it would require, and the budget that it would need, and that information came to the EDA Commission last Monday for their consideration. And so, this letter lays that out, and just kind of gives a little bit of background and understanding to set the context for the work that would need to be done. And the two main things that would need to be done is, we need to do a little more of general development planning. As you know, the property itself is fairly well-known, but we're talking about in order to get sewer and water to the property, making extensions down from Trunk Highway 60 on north, and we're also looking at a storm yard outlet that would go towards the southwest, towards Pearl Creek. So, there would need to be some additional information gathered on some of those elements outside the parcel boundaries, to make sure that before a plat is actually put on paper and locked in for that parcel, that we have a good understanding of how all the pieces are going to fit together. So, that would be the general development plan that was identified as Task A under the scope of work. And then, Task B under the scope of work is the actual process of plating. And the plat has to be prepared to meet your code requirements. Section 565 of your code has a very defined list of requirements and processes that have to be followed. The city administrator, city attorney and I have talked about that. There's some efficiencies the city has because it's acting as the developer of this property. So, there's some savings in terms of the timeframe, some of the scheduling that can be condensed because the city is controlling its own flow of information, and also some of the security requirements that the city can waive because it is doing business with itself. But, the actual list of the physical documents and plans you need to prepare still must be met. And so, that's what's laid out. There's a table on page four of our letter that kind of documents all of the different elements that have to be put together for the plat itself. For the preliminary plat, which then would have to go off for a public hearing, and then after that, it would go then to develop a final plat, which would be approved and certified and recorded at the county. So, the cost that we put together for the engineering and surveying work to do the plating is about $25,000 for the general development plan, and then about $85,000 for the actual plating process. So, the total fee to get from where we are today through a recorded final plat for Phase One of the business park would be roughly $110,000. And that item was considered by the EDA last Monday, April 1st, and it did authorize us to go ahead and proceed with that work, so that work is in process now. Pardon?
They did?
Yes, they did. Yep. So, really no action needed from the council tonight? This is just more of a, an update on the status of the project and the action that was taken by the EDA last Monday? It's probably going to be about two to three months to get that general development plan put together. Once that's put together, and bring it back review with the EDA, make sure they're comfortable with it, then we can go ahead and put the plat documents together, bring that back to the EDA, make sure they're comfortable with it, then you can come to the council and we can go through the process for planning and zoning and the public hearing and those elements of the plat. Just to be clear too, once we get the plat in place, there's still then would need to be, you know, construction projects that would need to be developed. So, this doesn't actually get us to the point where we're doing construction, but this is just actually plating the property, identifying the lots, the easements, the roadway, right-of-ways, and those sorts of things.
Where the improvements will be made.
Correct. Yep, and laying out all the information so we know what the grates are going to be, what the contours are going to be, and where the pipes are going to be located, but all of the, all of the details put together for a construction plan, we probably get about two-thirds of the way through the plating process. So, once the plat is done, and then the city or the EDA is interested in actually doing the project, you'd have to then authorize the specific construction project and we could put together the plans that would go off the bids after the plating process is So, with that, I'd certainly be glad to try and answer any questions that you may have
Do you have a guesstimate of what the overall project will cost?
With construction and everything?
Yeah.
That I do not yet. Well, actually, we have been from the-
It's not going to cost $100 million.
No, no, we did, we do have process which we put together for CETA to use in the BDPI application, and I do not have a copy of that with me tonight, but we do have information, so we, yeah, we could get that to you. I don't even want to say a number off the top of my head because if I recall it correctly-
I might be wrong.
Correct, right, but I don't, I don't think we're showing them-
So, if you gave us a number, we could count on that and not communicate?
Correct. If I gave you a number, there's a high probability-
I would be wrong.
Yeah, all right. You know, I'm trying to anticipate the questions that would be asked, and I have information to answer, and I did not anticipate some of them. But, I know we do have that information.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We could, we could find a shorter, we could provide it to market, market provides it.
Yeah, and, you know, whether I get the answer or not is not going to determine whether we do the project.
Right. And at this point, you're not committing to anything more than what the EDA has authorized for the engineering work on the plat. You haven't committed yet to spending a million dollars on construction or anything like that at this point. You're only sticking your neck out as far as you want to.
Yes, which is $110,000.
This is about $110,000. But certainly, it's that towards development of that, it means positive step in the direction of development of that property.
Building a house, you have to get the plans together first, and then you go from there. And this is getting the plans together.
If you fail the plan, does your plan fail?
Yes. Measure twice, cut once.
So, the other part of this, and I put this under Engineering just so we're talking at the same time here about this, is that BDPI grant, but that was submitted, and we're still waiting to hear back from the state on that. We may have talked about this already, but the, where this is at, and I put this in a memo, what we did talk about was the electric was added to that, so the state said that they would look at half of the cost of the electric, so that's a, that's a big deal, because we didn't think electric was going to be included in that. Right now, the only feedback that we've gotten so far, Dean is still reviewing that, we may not have had it that long, but they said they would only look at the first two phases in this application. And so, we kind of had to make some, Derek, you know, from Joe's office had to make some, from Baltimore, adjustments to some things, but basically, they're going to cover, if they cover it, it would just be 50% of the, of course, the second phase cost of the electric, water, sewer, and the street. So, that's kind of where that's at, and we're just waiting now to hear back from them. The other thing that we have to work through is that the state wants basically a commitment that the city's going to move ahead with the project if, you know, it gets formally approved. And so, we're going to work with our financial advisor, George Idleston from Northland Securities, and with Joe's office, and with my counsel, and we're going to try to come up with a way to do that, but actually sell the bonds before the state says, "We're going to give you the money." So, that's the other hurdle we kind of have to get through, but I think we'll work something out with them, so.
So, basically, the state, Dean wants the money in hand before-
They want our, their half, yeah, our share of it, right. And so, hopefully, we can figure out a way to do that.
So, then going into Phase Two and Three, Phase One would be an asset for us to help finance or to promote?
Any of it would be an asset. If we could get three lots, or whatever we get is going to be, you know, more than we have right now for available land.
Okay.
Yeah, Phase One does include three lots, as Mark mentioned, that they would all front on to, excuse me, County Road 12, and they could either access off the county road or off the internal road, we have to work out the access locations yet for the county. But I did find in email, these receipts are handy, I did find a PDF copy of the cost estimate that was provided to CETA. And in order, it includes getting the utilities to the site, getting them from north, properly line up the site down to Phase One, and then the improvements within Phase One. Not for the whole site, but just getting the utilities to the site and then putting them into Phase One. The total estimated cost was about $1,530,000. But as Mark indicated, we had submitted the application to Dean, hoping that we could justify that the off-site improvements, so the utility stations coming from Trunk Highway 60 down, were necessary in order to leverage the first phase, and if they could be, you know, justified as necessary, they might qualify for funding. And CETA, or excuse me, Dean has basically came by and said, "No, those utilities can also benefit other properties and stuff, and they're not, they won't be eligible." So, that's marketing key, they wanted us to kind of realize the cost estimate, to focus it more on what was eligible, and then they basically want the city to show their part of the investment-
Yeah.
-before they would commit to their part of the investment.
Now, Phase One, doesn't that essentially get all the utilities in place, because you're coming down from the north and up from the south, serving that, those three lots?
No, it wouldn't get all to the place, it would only construct maybe about 15% of the street, and, you know, probably construct maybe a third of the water main, a third of the sanitary sewer. Storm sewer would be, not that much would be installed because we wouldn't need the whole side of the pond yet, we wouldn't need all the storm sewer piping yet, so there would still be significant amount of work yet beyond Phase One. But, the main pipe coming down to serve the development would be there.
Yes, okay.
And would be there to serve all, it would just need to be branched off of for the remaining phases of the property.
Okay, so the main stuff would be there.
The one thing that, like, the trunk-
Yeah.
-would be in place, the branches would still need to be installed.
Yes, okay.
The deed funding that we're going for, how competitive of a process is that? I mean, are we feeling good that, you know, we do what they're asking us to do that will be awarded funding, or is it, are we one of a thousand searching for limited pot of money, or, you know, I'm just kind of trying to wrap my hands around, you know, what, what's the future look like here?
The deed funding is a pipeline, so it's not like they have a deadline, like, we applied for a grant for the Gunderson House through the State Historic Preservation Office, they have a deadline, and then all these applications come in, and then they review them. This is an ongoing program, as long as the legislature funds it every year, and so, when an application comes in, it depends on what they have for money. We were told last fall or early winter that they had quite a bit of money, but we still have to meet the criteria, but it's not like it's, we're competing against 20 other applications at the same time. Now, if other applications have come in, and I'm not aware of this dynamic at the same time as ours, you could say that we are competing, but this being a pipeline program makes it, if the money's there and we meet it, they'll fund it. So, what we don't know is, we still don't have a handle on, you know, how competitive is it, do they need us to make changes? We've already made a couple of changes to it, taken the third phase out, you know, and the discussion that we had about having the money there. So, they're still looking at it, they didn't just say, you know, so, I mean, I look at that somewhat positively, but I still don't know if what they're going to come back with. But, we have to have a pretty good feeling from, we have to have a pretty good direction from them that they're going to fund it if we're going to go through the hoops of the financing and getting that lined up. So, but I guess the answer is, at this point, we still don't know yet how competitive we are, but this is like, it's like a loan program, I mean, it's a competitive, it's a pipeline of money that's there, and so, if you, if they agree to fund it, the money's there and they'll fund it, the next one comes in from another city a couple of weeks later, the same thing. So, it's not like a, you know, a deadline and a bunch of apps come in, it's not like that. So, from that standpoint, it's, you know, better than like a straight-out grant, a traditional program.
So, we're able to work up to a point and then pause, wait to see if the deed funding comes through?
Yes.
If the deed funding doesn't come through, we can remain on pause-
Yes.
-and continue to seek the deed dollars.
We could do that, that's what I would do in the short term. If it becomes apparent we're not going to get it, then I think we kind of have to go to a different plan of, okay, this is what the cost is going to be, but it may take longer, a little bit longer, and I'm not talking five years longer, but it may take longer to get where we want to get, you know, depending on with all the other projects we have and our deck capacity and all that good stuff to do it. Where the deed thing is really nice, because if we get that money, we can just plow ahead with, with a lot of that project to get it done, and we're paying 50 cents on the dollar for a project that normally, this kind of, this kind of program is pretty unique, I think it stays, I don't think there's a lot of programs like this anymore. So, if we can get it, I think it's a godsend to be honest with you. And if we have to reapply or come back in six months, I think it's more than worth it to do that.
One other component to that too is there is a memo in your packet from Abby at CETA, who's working on the application on behalf of the city. And the contact at D has indicated that he'll essentially gauge how strong the application is even before the city has, you know, documented they're a part of the funding. So, he's going through that process now, and she's in correspondence with him, so he's going to give her a sense of how strong he thinks and how competitive he thinks our application is, you know, to be funded.
Right.
So, we'll be getting a little bit of feedback.
What does deed stand for, I'm sorry?
Department of-
Employed Economic Development, used to be Department of Trade, Economic Development, so state agency.
Okay, so this is all state money, not federal?
Yes, this is all state money.
Yeah.
Not like our small cities grant that might be, have some federal money in it, it's state money, yep. So, we just wanted to provide an update tonight on this, just keep the council in the loop because it's obviously a big project, so we'll continue to do that. The planning will come to the council, it'll first go to the Planning Commission, and then it'll come to the council. It'll be a combined preliminary and final plat together in one, because we're, you know, it's our plan, so that'll save quite a bit there, it'll be one step, but that, that will be coming back to the council, so we're trying to keep, keep you guys in the loop on everything that's going on, so.
So, and we'll move on to item B, Second Street Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, we're put up for bids, and the project essentially consists of slip lining or putting a new plastic polymer liner in the existing sanitary sewer along Second Street from Redding Avenue on the forest. It also includes digging up in a couple of spots to replace a couple of the service lines that need replacing, and also to dig up and replace the manhole here at the intersection of Redding and Second. Fairly straightforward plan, probably one of the most complicated aspects of it is the traffic control, because we are working on Mid-Dot's Trunk Highway, and so they require to prove to involve traffic control, plan, and detour routing and all such things. But we did put the project up for bids, two bids were received, they were open last Thursday at 11:00 AM. The two bids were from Raw Construction and from Hazelton Construction. Out of those two bids, Raw Construction was the low bidder, at $215,156.60. Hazelton Construction was about $18,750 higher than Raw. For comparison, our engineer's estimate was about $205,000, so the low bid, which is Raw, was about 5% above our estimate, about $10,000 above our estimate. And when we go back and look at that, actually, the first two items are mobilization, traffic control, and they had more money in those than we had estimated in those. So, the actual work of the pipe installation, the paving, the slip line and all of that, they were actually lower than our costs, but they put a little more money into that traffic control because it is going to be a more involved process for the traffic control. So, actually, the prices that we estimated for the tangible parts of the work, they're right in line and actually below our estimates, so we feel the bids are competitive and the prices we receive are reasonable. And so, even though the low bid is about $10,000 higher than our estimate, we feel that's more of the fact that we didn't put enough money into the estimated amount of the traffic control. And so, we don't think it's an indication that the bids are competitive or reasonable, we think that they are, and we wouldn't see any reason not to move forward. So, if the council does want to move forward and accept these bids and award a contract, the recommendation would be to award contract to Raw Construction based on their low bid If the council's not ready to award a contract, you certainly could table it if you need to get more information or have questions you want to follow up on. We do, we are allowed to hold the bids for up to 60 days. Bid opening was just April 4th, so we could hold the bids up until June 4th, so you could award a contract at your May meeting if you felt you needed the time to gather any more information. Completion date, Wayne and I were talking, it's set for mid-September, so we've given the contractors some flexibility, the physical work isn't going to take that long, and the contract is written that once they start it, they've got X number of days to complete it. But we gave them a little bit of sliding windows to where they could fit the work in, knowing that that flexibility would allow them to give us a better price for the work. You know, if they can schedule that lining crew, when that lining crew has a lull in their work activity, you know, that's better than if we're trying to get them when they're in the peak of their businesses. So, with that, everything from, from statute perspective is ready, proceed with the contract if the council is still implying. So, with that, I guess I'll ask if there's any questions regarding the contract.
When were they looking to start the project?
I don't think we've gotten a detailed construction schedule from yet, that wasn't required as part of the bid. But we would be getting that as part of the, you know, once we get the contracts executed and scheduled pre-construction meeting, we'd ask them for a-
They'll be working around Rosefest, I'm guessing, or we-
That was a question that was brought up, they were not to, they were to have it completed by that time.
It's a short project, I mean, what is the, is it five days they've got?
It's probably, well-
Two sections of four, four days or five days.
Like you said, it's totaled about two weeks, right?
Yeah, they got five days to do the manhole in the intersection, then they got to reset up everything, and I think there's five days for the center section of the road, so it's like a two-week project, but-
Yeah.
And then the completion date that was written in was September 13.
And Rosefest is the third weekend in August, around, yeah, around 18th, 19th?
That was discussed at the meeting, council meetings, on Rosefest in particular was brought up, that it needs to be completed before or after.
Correct.
Yeah. Certainly don't want holes in the road during parade.
Yeah, true. I myself don't know too much about RMW Construction, has anybody got any dig on them at all? Hazelton we're familiar with, they did a nice job down on First Street.
Raw did Third Street Forest, and the problem wasn't so much the construction, it was getting done in a timely manner. So, that was back in 13, I believe, 2013?
Yeah. And we ended up having to wrangle back and forth with not, we were holding, yeah.
So-
It took considerably longer than you were supposed to.
This project being compartmentalized the way it is, in other words, we'll have two permits from Mid-Dot that are five days in length, so they have to get done within those five days according to that permit and according to the way the contract's written. What we have to do is with either, whatever contractor is used is make sure that they understand what Rosefest is, so that they're not working either started or, you know, that they're not working the weekend of Rosefest.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's kind of implicit with this project is that it's not the first project that Rosefest is going to play with, and so, we have to, you know, convey, I mean, to the contractor that they can't work during this period of time. Raw should be amenable to this, I mean, when we worked with them in 2013, they were, you know, they were pretty responsive, I didn't have any issues, and you would have known if I did pretty quickly that, you know, as far as getting back to us, working with, I don't know if that was you guys or if that was Joe or Maile or something. And, you know, they, you know, StanTech at that time, the city engineer felt, you know, the project was constructed within the contract requirements, and felt that they did, you know, a good job, and so, it was just they didn't get done when they were, you know, at the end. So, I don't know, Scott, if you could bring that into play when we talk about awarding this now, or?
I mean, they substantial performed, that's not the issue, they did what was required of the contract, as others have said, it was a timing issue. Can you bring into play arguably the lowest bidder, so the answer really at the end of the day is no. I mean, this should be the one that's awarded too, unless we can definitively say there's an issue that they can't meet under the contract, and I don't think there is with this.
It's, it becomes a, a kind of an issue with contractors, when you talk about awarding it to the lowest responsible bidder, you have to have an extremely tight reason to reject the bid, and they were, they didn't get done according to the last contract, but my first, my gut feeling is on this, that probably wouldn't be sufficient to say you can't award it to them, because they did the work, you know, within the contract, I mean, the work, the quality of the work wasn't the issue, and they completed it, it was just a timing issue, and so, that's what comes into play. I mean, that would be the only conceivable reason that this council would discuss not, you know, having concerns about not awarding it to them. And I would agree with Scott, I mean, I haven't talked to you about this, but I figured that's kind of what he would say, because that's what my thought is on it too, I just don't think we have that.
Well, I think the other aspect on it too is-
Probably just do that.
-your contract in 2013, it sounds like the construction contract had-
Damages.
Yeah, had, and had resources for the city to utilize-
We did utilize.
-and you were able to successfully utilize it.
Right.
And, but they did disagree with how we were assessing the D and R.
Oh, sure, any contractor would, I mean, that's, yeah, that's-
They're not going to say, oh, that's not right.
Right. That's not that unusual of a, of a contractor, you know, if they exceed that bid they, their own.
I'll say this, I was a little uneasy when I first saw that name, because I remember we had an issue before, and talking to Joe here, I had a lot of those concerns dealt with. One thing I was wondering if they were actually going to be installing a liner, or if they were subcontracting it to a specialist, because that is a pretty specialized line of work. One thing I was wondering if they were actually going to be installing a liner or if they were subcontracting it to a specialist because that is a pretty specialized line of work. That's not the issue. Joe also tells me that there are state requirements for...
Responsible contractor.
Yeah.
2017, all contractors are responsible or required to submit documentation to certify that they are what's called classified as a responsible contractor. And they have to furnish certain documentation with their bid, then have to furnish, you know, once they've established their level of bidder and there's the contract documents get exchanged for execution, they have to then supply supplemental information to go even further to document that they are what's classified as a responsible contractor under the state law.
So then the state, they, they have to receive a permit from the state to open up the highway, correct?
Correct.
So in other words, they're under the gun from the state too. I gather that...
Any conditions the state puts on the permit, yeah, would have to be...
What happens if they don't abide by it or, you know, go past it? I'm just curious as to what, we'd have the backing of the state then too also to get this job done, is that correct?
I'd have to look at what the conditions of the permit, we don't have the permit yet, so it would depend upon whatever conditions the state puts upon their... Yeah, I, the state has a pretty good amount of leverage when it comes to the work within their trunk highway.
Right. And they have to supply it, right?
Correct.
All right, absolutely. Now, Joe...
Performance bond and a payment.
I have a question. Would we be able to, I don't know if you would actually do this as an addendum to the contract or whatever, but could we have them sign something saying that they acknowledge that they can't work during that period of Rose Fest?
Well, we could certainly, we could memorialize it in the contract. We could write this a change order in the contract.
Or a change order. Get them to sign something saying that you can't work during this period of time.
Why, in other words?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
I'd recommend not only that can they not work during that time, but that they don't everything pour off either.
Well, that's just...
They really don't.
That's worse than if they were to be working.
That's other conditions.
Yeah, that's what I mean is they won't have...
Essentially, that Second Street has to be usable for the city activities during their festival. And, and, so it has to be usable for you to be able to do your, your activities within the festival. And also has, you know, no work can occur during that date. We could certainly write that as a change order just to clarify the, the time of the contract and get them to sign.
I would think they would go along with that. It's only, you know, a week period.
Yeah, typically what, like, is it Thursday, Sunday?
Yeah, yeah. But basically, they'd be out that week. It probably started that week anyway.
Right.
But that way, it's in writing and I think that would be good to do that.
Yeah. I mean, if you want, if you want to make the award, and I think I'll defer to Scott to make sure, but if you wanted to make the award contingent upon them agreeing to that condition...
Okay.
Then that way, if we approach them and they say, no, that's a deal breaker, we can come back and let you know that, as they know, it's a deal breaker.
Yeah, I doubt that.
If you make it contingent upon that and we check with them and they're agreeable to it, then we can put together paperwork, send it over to them with the contract, have them sign off on it, and you would sign off on it and then you execute the contract.
So we have to put that into the motion then?
I think staff knows what to do. I mean, I, it really is a situation where you're talking about, would it be better if that week was excluded in the original bid documents? Absolutely. Do I think they knew about it or had to know about it? Yes, I think they did. So really, what you're trying to do is book in and cover what the issue was. And I think via change order, that's probably sufficient.
Yeah, and we propose a $0 change order, just to clarify the terms of the contract.
Well, and, and do they really want to fight that headache too? I mean, if it comes back to us, it's...
It's true.
I mean, when, you know, if I were a contractor and want to do future business with the city, I'd agree in a heartbeat to complete that weekend. Because they'll never come back again if they, if they screw it up and we screw it up, you know?
I'm sure they'll...
They'll be gone and they'll be gone.
That's not an issue that you need to have, that there are community activities that you have to...
It's fairly common to write those such requirements into contract documents.
Well, I think it also says something that, given past performance, that they wouldn't come and did a project again.
Why, as we were discussing before the meeting, too, it, you know, sometimes with a contract, especially if it's not an issue of the work quality, it's a matter of the timing. Sometimes it's a matter of, you know, sometimes contractors are going after bids and they wind up winning more work than they planned to, and they get themselves overextended, and they wind up running out.
It's a matter of responsibility and...
Correct. Or it could be a certain individual that, you know, you don't know. I mean, and still, if we're talking...
It turns out they're responsible for their...
Correct, they still are responsible.
...work and with getting the job done according to what the city...
Correct. Based on what I, I mean, I wasn't here, but based on what I've heard about what happened six years ago, I would let that deter you from proceeding with them. And it sounds like legally, we really wouldn't raise this too high. But we do have legally, we have recourse in the contract if they don't perform. And it sounds like you were able to successfully utilize those in the past, and we'll certainly attempt to do so again if it got into that situation, which hopefully it will now.
Mayor, I'll move Resolution Number 2019-15 for the Second Street Sanitary Sewer Improvements and include as part of the motion to direct staff to communicate strongly with the bidder that the Rose Fest weekend is off limits, that they don't, that they don't engage in work, that, that the Second Street be both usable and not worked on during that weekend.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion passed. Wonderful. Moving along. Now, come to Item C, alley drainage behind VFW. Now, that alley is a bit of a problem, isn't it?
Yeah. I was approached on this already two years ago, and there really was not anything that was decided if it belonged to the city problem or if it belonged to the VFW. I kind of looked at it, that it was a probability of a lot of water coming from various businesses, which created a downflow by the VFW, but there's also a little bit of a sinkhole kind of type thing where the water built up before it went over the sidewalk and down Fourth Street going to the north. Now, last week, I believe it was, yeah, last week, I was approached again on this, and they do have two sinkholes down there now on their property, the VFW. But I also was able to see the water flow down the same as it has been before. Now, I know that if it's a small amount of light rain, it doesn't bother, but when it does get heavy, like the snow melt or extremely heavy rain, it does create a problem. Now, I did talk to Wayne, and also I think you're probably gonna look at it too. Hasn't really been determined whose problem it is, but we're also looking at probably trying to find some kind of a fix that works for everybody with it. So we just would like to have, have it looked at and come back with an opinion on it and go with it from there.
I've got a question for you. Is, is this just a situation of the parking area being flooded or is the water actually getting into the basement of the building?
No, as I understood, there is two sinkholes there which goes underneath the concrete, but it will eventually, I'm sure, you know, deteriorate the...
More and easier, it's only gonna get worse.
Correct. And then, so I thought of maybe a little bit of a, of a berm right by the alleyway. That was discussed. It won't stay there forever because of the snow, you know, the street department going through and removing the snow. Now, the VFW is aware of it, that it's their problem too. So it's kind of a situation of where I don't have an answer for. So I'd like to have a little bit of an exploring by the engineer. And Wayne, which he's gone into numerous times already with it, he has talked to the members of the VFW. And Wayne, probably you can fill me in a little bit more as to what's going on.
I think the biggest part with the sinkholes is the, there's a catch basin back there and the ground stuff. So the groundwater is taking all the soil underneath the...
Is the sinkhole right by the catch basin?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's a cement slab that put my arm underneath it. All of that flow is going through into the catch basin because the ground is on. So if you re-ground the, the catch basin so the water couldn't flow there anymore...
Right, and go back over there.
And then patch the potholes over that, over it broken up, I think that would fix most of it as far as the groundwater.
And is it, is it the city catch basin or is it the private?
It'd be a private catch basin.
Now, I get back to that Third Street project again. Part of that was taking out private sewer main that cut across the backyard of several lots there on this side of Third Street. And as I remember, it was supposed to empty out into a manhole right there at the end of that alley. Is that...
Yeah. Well, there is one kind of a...
What I'm...
...recent life is, you don't want a camera to see what it is.
Yeah. What I'm wondering is whether that laying under there inactive now could be picking up groundwater that's causing...
You know, the sewer main would be much deeper than what this snowwater drain is.
Right, but the sinkhole.
Oh, the sinkhole, it's just, I think it's, sort of it's just a lack of maintenance from not sealing the asphalt, and it's where the joint from the asphalt to the concrete is.
Sure.
And it...
That's a natural, yeah.
Once it starts getting eaten out, the asphalt just falls away.
It's not something that's being eaten out from below.
It's, it's...
Wearing away from...
You know, once the groundwater, or once the water gets up underneath that cement slab, it's just taking all the material with it, making it worse every time it rains.
What you're, what you're describing are two fairly common occurrences. The catch, I mean, the water is supposed to go to that catch basin, and when it's, it's going there, it's finding any weak spots, such as that joint between a blacktop and concrete, two dissimilar materials. And, you know, over time, that bond can let loose between them, and that water can get in there, and the water gets into it, the more, you know, it just makes that exacerbate. Same, once it, once it finds a way to get into the catch basin through the, through the, essentially the adjusting rings rather than over the surface, it, it will, it will erode that material and then it'll just, that, that problem will grow over time.
That part of it, I think, is their problem. My issue is the water that's flowing down the alley, it gets down close to the curb, the sidewalk, and then it puddles up, it can, there, and then it overflows, some of it down into the parking lot of the VFW. And that, so everything that's coming down from, actually from...
So you're, you're wondering, it sounds like you're wondering, are we...
All they want to do is...
Is any pub, is public water contributing to the problem?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, certainly, we want, we want to manage our water and not have it causing problems for any private problems.
Yeah, that's what I want.
Okay. Yeah, we could certainly, so a couple things. One, yeah, one is what's the problem they're experiencing, and then two, what's, what's contributing to that problem?
Correct.
So I think we need a motion to instruct the city engineer to review that.
Okay, how would you like that worded? I'll make the motion for the city...
Engineer.
Engineer and...
Instructing the city engineer to...
And start source people.
To review drainage along alley, along the VFW property, or, you know, along the VFW parking lot.
And like you said, they have now...
Yeah.
What's, what is city property water and what is private property water?
Kind of document, what we see is what's, what's happening and what we suspect may be the cause. And come back and let you know if it's gonna take some more, you know, if we gotta do survey, we wouldn't do anything like that. We would do like just a general investigation first, come back, and then if we, if more detailed investigations needed, you know, we would bring that back to you for further consideration.
I'll second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. So we move on now to legal. And the first item there, I guess, would need you to determine how to adjust the fee
So in your packet, there is, well, several things related to this. The resolution amended the fee schedule. Then I also put in there, Scott provided us with a list of some fees from some of their communities that have rental ordinances. And then I put in the memo, the meeting memo, kind of just a couple of options, I guess, to try to summarize that a little bit. There's basically two ways this fee, I think, for all intensive businesses could be structured. One of them would just be a flat fee, which some communities have. And I had just put in here proposed range of, if you go that route, $30 to $50. The other fee structure would be to do it based on the number of units. So you have a, I would recommend you have a number for a single-family unit, like a single-family house that's a rental. And then you would, from there, go to duplex and multifamily, and then you'd set a fee per unit, that's what, so I said in the memo, single-family, $30 to $50. Duplex, somewhere in the range of $40 to $60. And then $10 a unit with an absolute seed number, whether that's 75 or 100, whatever it is. And then the, the flat fee. So, you know, the flat fee system would be easier to administer. A fee based on the number of units, though, might be more equitable. Most communities have an annual rental license. The other question then is the term, whether you want to do one, two, or three years. I wouldn't recommend one, three years, but I'll say that right straight out, but it's gonna be the term. So the two questions are the term and then how you structure the fees for the license.
So is this primarily a way to have the property owners, landlords accountable for what is happening on their property?
Yes.
Or is this a revenue stream?
It's not a revenue stream.
Yeah.
It's not a revenue...
In which case, I, whatever is the minimum, say $25 to register, and then they're responsible.
But I...
Where is...
I would put it a little bit differently, not so much that it's forcing the landlords to be responsible for their tenants as that it is giving the landlords more power to be able to monitor their tenants and, and attempt to enforce better behavior.
Well, it would...
More power or more responsibility?
Well, both, you know. It's a conduit that we say as a city, you have that license on the wall, wherever it is, and every time you see that, it's a reminder that you have to follow these, you know, items. And they get a copy of the code.
And if something goes wrong, then they're responsible.
Yes. And so it's a, it's a conduit for us. I think one step, it's like one less step when we do enforcement because they've been in, we've given them a copy of that ordinance, and it's got all the requirements in it. It's pretty clear, and it's not, you know, for ordinance, it's not too lengthy. And so hopefully, they read it and understand it, and it's kind of bringing them in here and we're saying, look, here's the deal, you gotta follow these rules. Where right now, there's nothing like that. I mean, they're just renting, there's no contact with the city, unless there's police calls or nuisance or whatever violations. This way, every year or two years or however often it's done, they come back and they sign new, they pay their fee. And so it's a, it's another level of enforcement, I guess you could say, even though most of it can be actually enforced. So the revenue is secondary.
Yeah, yeah. Revenue, I think. Like I said, it gives a landlord, okay, this, see something's going on, whether they smell some funny smoke coming out of the apartment or see bad activity. Hey, you gotta stop this or because you're putting me at risk of not being able to rent this property anymore. Hopefully would, would help. Barring this, tenants have a lot of rights that landlords don't have given to them.
Yeah, this is gonna be...
No, I, I mean, this is exactly what you were saying. It's a conduit to get to a certain level of, I don't know, I call it behavior, but that's what it is.
Responsibility.
Minimum responsibility.
Yeah.
And it's getting that minimum standard there versus having a full-blown rental registration procedure where you're going in, doing inspections and taking it to that level. This is a step back from that, but it still gives the ability of the city to do that, particularly PD to do that, which I think was the important element you talked about before. So, yeah, I think it gets there, I think it accomplishes that. I don't think this is by any means a revenue raiser.
No.
Really, how do you administer it? It's a minimum fee that's in place to do that and that's what Mark is talking about. And we gave you an example, and most of those entities, as Mark said, have higher level type ordinances, but it was to give you a flavor.
They're also a much bigger population.
Yeah.
Situation.
Yeah.
And keeping the fee as low as possible, that's, that just encourages people to come and register, oh, darn, that's another little expense I wish I didn't have, but I better do it.
Yeah, uh-huh.
If it's a hundred and fifty bucks, maybe I can skate by without. Well, I got a question, Scott, particular. I'm a landlord. I have bad tenants. You come and tell me, yeah, I got to kick them out, you know, or do whatever. Can you actually force me to vacate the property or do something with it? I mean, how much teeth does this have?
Yeah, this is not really the intent of where we're at with this for that purpose. Really, and I, I think it is a two-sided type equation here, that the city has the enforcement ability to say, we want our properties in the community so the police department for enforcement relative to those can be at this certain standard. Here's what we're saying is not allowing the property. Now, honesty, most of those things aren't allowing the property anyways, but we're really saying, here is, here's what it is. It gives us the ability to say, now we know what properties are renting and we've got a better idea.
And, and it puts you in a position of, okay, well, your two-year or one-year or whatever permit is expiring and because of what has gone on here, we're not willing to renew that, you no longer can rent that property until. Well, that's, that's what I was asking, basically like our. That's the. Our litter law, you know, for having junk vehicles on the street. They go back to court and the judge says this here, where, where do we all stand in this thing? That's what I'm after.
Right, and what it also does is empower the landlord to do with tenants. He or she can deal with those tenants and say, look, you're violating this, I don't want you in here, my lease says you can't violate it. Landlord can kick them off if they want. City's not going to step in those shoes and say, do that. That's not what this ordinance intends to do, but it does empower the landlord as well. Now, does that give the council the ability to say, this is a problem property, we're not going to renew the registration for it? Sure. Do I think you'll ever really get there? Probably not.
Hopefully not.
If you do get there, and you're right, hopefully not.
Yeah.
But even if you do get there, it's, it gives an avenue for, for the chief to go in and say, this has got to be different. If it's not different, then the landlord is not going to be able to rent the property out. Now, that is not likely, but it's there, it's available.
So the, the ultimate enforcement is they can't rent it out for a year and if you take that away, that's a big.
That's what I'm going, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
That's going to hurt them.
Before we go any further, I guess I just want to disclose I'm president of those three departments. I just wanted to make that public. It's a nonprofit.
And I don't think it's a conflict of interest. Doug asked me this question and it's, it's not a conflict, it's not a direct benefit to me.
I don't see it as either. I know you raised that before when we were talking in previous meetings. I don't see it as being a contradiction, but it's, it's fine, it's closed and everybody knows.
Everybody is facing the same fee.
Yep.
Thing and it's not, not a conflict.
So we got a consensus on the fee, fifty dollars?
I'd say twenty-five dollars. If this is not.
For a year or?
Yes, per year, that's what I'd say.
Well, let's cover the cost.
Well.
The paperwork and everything.
Okay, how much is the cost?
Um.
Is it fifteen minutes to get all the paperwork done and?
Five eleven dollars here. Twenty-five dollars is more or less a waste of time. No, I, I was thinking actually that rather than make it annually, say it every two years, twenty-five dollars a year, then two years, it's fifty dollars, you fill out the papers one time.
I, I was kind of leaning towards maybe thirty dollars and then ten dollars for each additional unit.
So we have no consensus.
Apparently not. We haven't spoken up.
I, I really have no thoughts on it. I, I, they all sound reasonable to me. I don't, I don't think it's going to make or break anybody out there, no matter which direction you go to, judging by the numbers you're all throwing out there.
Yeah, I'm amenable to.
So it's just a matter.
It sounds like your.
My.
Hey, I'm sorry, I was thinking, this is, I'm sitting over here. I own a couple properties and I go, yeah, I'm refusing to do this, you know, my taxes are high and my water bill is high and there's, you can't make me do this, can you? I mean, there's really no way. What do we do with that? I own two, three, five houses in town, whatever. No, you can't make me do this. What, what do we have as a recourse for that?
If they're not licensed or, or in this case registered for rental, we can prevent the renting of the property.
We have to take them to court.
Yeah, we have to take steps to get there, but it's, it's possible.
Again, not the intent at all.
I actually know, I, I like this, I was just thinking of an example where I was, we have a lot of landlords and we really try to be kind of a full-service department and, but I'm sorry, I'm dressed like this, had a meeting and I'm late and it was off to me. Anyways.
I thought it was a pleasant change.
I think. We get a lot of landlords that go, can you go tell them to do this and can you go tell them to do that? Well, we don't mind doing some of this, some of this is really not in our wheelhouse and at some point we have to tell them, no, we're not going to go tell your tenant to stop stealing electricity from the place next door. That is your responsibility as the owner of the property to do this. And what I like about this is we can say, you know, if you keep involving us in this, it could get to be something like this and, and we don't want that either. I'm certainly not, and I've said this a million times, I'm not in the business to make money. We hemorrhage money, the police department, I know we do, and I'm glad, glad that we don't make money by enforcing the law. So as far as where the fee goes, I'm open to whatever you all decide and it's fine, but I really, I think something that's just set in the set is easier for, for our public. And another question, what about our trailer courts? Do they fall into this at all?
What if they rent?
If they rent.
If they rent the trailers?
Yeah, the trailers are rented. I don't think, I think where he's going with this is trailer courts are ground leases.
Right, no, I figured that they lease the property, they put the trailer on. It's if they're actually leasing the property, leasing the trailer off to somebody else.
And does that our contract for deed? I'm selling you my trailer, contract for deed, is that considered a rental or not?
It's not if it's a true contract for deed, which means it has to be recorded and it's an actual sale of the property and, and that type of thing. There are a number of folks who try to evade rental registration and rental licensing by saying, I've got a contract for deed, state law requires it be filed. If it's really filed, the property's been sold, it's not rental. If it hasn't been filed, it's not a contract for deed, it's a rental situation.
So then one of my questions about the fees is how do we, do we do the legwork on that? If I come to you and say, you owe us this, you know, like, well, I'm doing a contract for deed, do we have to do any legwork in finding that?
Probably not.
No, I would say not.
Okay.
I mean, you guys.
That's, that's not your.
Will follow up with violations of, you know, there's a list of violations that are included in this ordinance, but the actual administration of the ordinance, the actual example of if there's a unit that you guys find out or Mike finds out or whoever, that it, it's being rented out and I would send a letter to them. So you, it's not going to be like junk cars and.
And does this cover anything about our storage facilities that, that rent out, you know, like our mini stores or residential?
Just making sure all the same thing.
Just residential.
Good question. Thank you.
Well, we just seen money being spent for a police department keeping up with this here. I think I, I'm speaking for myself now. I like your idea, John, of, of thirty dollars and ten dollars per unit, is that what it was?
Each addition.
Each one.
Thank you.